No, I got the majority.
Yes, ma'am.
Do any of your...
Got a ca...
Do any of your economic policies involve either cutting back or means testing social security benefits?
Yes. Excuse me. First of all, if you want to get into the details of all the plans we've laid out, because they're the most comprehensive plans of any campaign, for which I'm proud, that's just kind of my nature, I'm a little wonky, and my nourishment comes from meeting with people that I really respect and forging plans that I want to implement. As it relates to social security, the plan, and you can go to Jeb2016.com to get the full details. The plan that I've laid out for social security is, I'd say there are four big points. One, to progressively raise the retirement age as we're doing now, similar to the 1980s, both the early retirement age and the retirement age. Two, create a minimum benefit for every person that is a social security recipient of 125% of the poverty level. And at the top end, lower the percentage of income to be received. So it would be, in effect, means tested, you'd have lower benefits than what current beneficiaries would get. We would keep the same system for everybody that has it, preserve and protect it, and going forward, preserve and protect it for the next generations, because right now, if nothing happens in the next 15 years, there'll be 30% reductions in benefits. That's what the law requires. To suggest we have no, this is all just going to work out, a little pixie dust here and it'll all work out, is just not naive, it's really malpractice, to be honest with you. We have a actuarial deficit in social security that has to be fixed. And I think the way to do it is to means test on the top end, raise the benefits for everybody, make it easier for people to save in the private market. Right now, it's really hard for a small business to set up a 401K. And when they do, they can't, there are all sorts of rules that make it pretty expensive, both the setup, setting it up, and the responsibilities as an employer. We should make, we should allow small businesses to pool their resources, so a multitude of small businesses could come together and be able to offer a 401K. We ought to allow for employers to be able to provide monies into an employee's savings account, which is not allowed right now. We ought to make it less costly, in general, for that to happen. So, private savings combined with a reform of social security would save social security based on the outside folks that have looked at this for the next 50 years. And that's the plan that we've laid out. One other thing, because we do have people more or less my age here. So when you're 67, now or 66, and you want to work or you have to work, there are a lot of people in this community, I'm sure, just like there is in Miami, where people haven't saved enough to be able to retire, as we traditionally viewed it. But today, if you continue to work past retirement age, you have to continue to pay into the social security fund with your employee payroll tax, which is about 6%. My proposal also includes allowing people to keep that money. To allow that, so as a senior citizen, if you're working part-time or full-time, because you have to or you want to, you wouldn't have to continue to pay into the social security fund. Yes, ma'am?
As a retired nurse, I have two questions that came to mind. You were talking about we're on the edge of discovery in the whole basic sciences area.
Yeah.
Would you support restoring the cuts that occurred to the National Institutes of Health?
I would.
Because I think that's one of the major areas that we've really fallen behind on, and that's led to some of the difficulties of pharmaceutical companies being the ones who offer the grants. So I'm glad to hear that you would restore that. My second question is, where do you stand in relation to expanding background gun checks? Would you close the loopholes?
So on the first question, we need to reform the whole drug discovery process. Over the last, gosh, 10 years, it was expensive before and long, and now it's double expensive and double the length in terms of drug discovery. So, for example, in New Hampshire, I've met a lot of people that are involved in the Alzheimer's Association, and they normally come with a good question, which is, do you think that we should be emphasizing Alzheimer's and neurological challenges in terms of the NIH? And I say, yeah, I think we ought to be strategic in how we invest the $25 billion that goes to NIH funding. And because I think we can find a cure for Alzheimer's and mental health challenges that are playing out in a really devastating way in our communities. So, we need to be strategic, and we need to reform the speed and the cost of getting drugs to market. The reason why prescription drugs, non-genetic prescription drugs, cost so much is it costs a lot to get it through the process of approval. And there are ways to reform it, and the Congress has worked on this. I don't think they're going to get to the finish line once again this year, but there's some good ideas to be able to do that. As it relates to background checks on guns, I think that that ought to be a state-by-state issue. You're in northern, I mean, here, I'm guessing now, maybe I'm wrong, but I would assume that in rural New Hampshire, you have a different view about guns than you might in Manhattan. And so, I like the approach of viewing this state-by-state. In Florida, we are a pro-gun, pro-Second Amendment state. We do have a background check. The loophole, I'm not sure what you're referring to, you're talking about gun shows or... Yeah, we don't, I guess if that's a loophole, we have that as well. But gun violence in Florida has dropped dramatically, because we focus on habitual violent offenders when we focus on guns, and they serve long prison sentences when they use guns to commit crimes. Lo and behold, we've had dramatic reductions without infringing upon people's rights. Here's the place where, I don't have the specific answers, but we need to find an answer, which is mental health. We have people now that are playing out, we see it on television, these tragic cases of deranged people that go and kill innocent people, the last one being, I believe, in Oregon, where they were killed because they were shot in the head if they were Christians, they were wounded if they weren't. God, this guy would be totally nuts. And yet, he had a gun, he had access to a gun. Somehow, we have to figure out a way to protect private privacy rights, and also identify people that have big mental health challenges, so that they can't access guns. And that, I think, needs to be where the, there needs to be a consensus built to deal with this, because these mass murders that take place are typically, almost every case, I think, deranged people that have gone into isolation, in effect, and have just spiraled out of control, and there hasn't been any intervention to recognize this before it was too late. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Governor Bush.
Good morning.
My name is Peter Hill. I've been a pharmacist in this community for 40 years, and at 68 years old, I'm still working, as I fear for my retirement because of blatant unsustainable government spending at all levels. A few statistics to preface my question.
Sure.
U.S. government debt, on an irresponsible cash accounting basis, is almost $20 trillion. But on a GAAP basis, that everybody else has to use, it's...
When you say GAAP, to really explain it, it's general accounting practices. So if it was a private business, you would have...
What the real people have to use.
Contingent liabilities, the real liabilities that would be in the $50 trillion range, right?
It's over $100 trillion. Also, on a GAAP basis...
After 50, it kind of starts becoming a rounding error.
Our yearly deficit for the last eight years, on a GAAP basis, is averaging around $6 trillion a year and increasing. These mind-numbing numbers do not include liabilities of the U.S. Postal Service, the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, social security disability, FHA, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, that represent another black trillion-dollar hole. If you're elected president, you will inherit all this debt. With a do-nothing Congress on both sides of the aisle, they can't even come up with a lawfully mandated budget, let alone balance anything. They kick the can down the road and spend even more. And the Federal Reserve is close to raising interest rates that will most surely precipitate a recession and raise rates on all of this debt. My question is...
Why the hell are you running? Sorry.
What believable...
Of course, you're the right guy, that's why.
I'm just...
What believable, and I underline believable, economic policies could a Bush presidency provide that even begin to stop the excess spending? And where would this policy have our deficit after four years of a Bush presidency?
Fantastic question. I appreciate you taking the time to lay it out, lay out the predicate, and give a very thoughtful question. First, we can't tax our way to prosperity, and we can't tax our way out of this massive deficit and debt that you're describing, which is very accurate. It's just not possible, because every time, let's put it this way, Barack Obama has raised taxes $2 trillion, and the debt has grown by, will have grown by $8 trillion during his eight years. The amount of debt accumulated in his eight years will be roughly equal to the debt that has been accumulated by all 43 presidents prior, to put it in perspective. So I reject the notion that this is a question of raising taxes. High growth will create more revenue, exponentially more revenue, than higher taxes. So we have to have a high-growth strategy, not by itself. By itself, that won't solve this problem, but it certainly, without it, you can't solve it. Secondly, as I laid out, as I suggested, the three big social security, Medicare, Medicaid, and now Obamacare are the large, in Medicare Part D, are the large entitlements that create the, you know, whether it's $50 or $100 trillion, that depends on what your discount rate is to get to that number. But it's, just put in perspective, our economy is about a $19 to $20 trillion economy. We're talking about debt levels that are two and a half times bigger than our whole economic output in a given year. And these are numbers that, you know, over 75 years, will just, will consume everything. So entitlement reform and reforming social security are the two biggest things that we can do to curb these out-year costs and lessen the GAAP deficit or debt that you're describing. Third, I think we need to change our monetary policy. And this may be counterintuitive, because you're right, if you, if interest rates go up, debt service goes up. But interest rates at zero enable horrible behavior by the political class in Washington. Think about it. If you get, if you can borrow money at zero, you know, free, it's not free, but you begin to think it's free. So when you have a compromise, like last week, when the debt ceiling was increased, the compromise was, both sides got what they wanted. I don't know, I mean, if you have a compromise with your spouse and you say, okay, we have a, we have a, I want to, you know, I want to buy, I want to buy a boat to go fishing, and the other spouse says, I want to take a vacation with this extra money, and the compromise is, we'll just do both and borrow the money to be able to do it? That's exactly what happened last week, $80 billion over the next two years. And so, because there's 0% interest, there's no, it's kind of like Alfred E. Newman, remember Mad Magazine? It's like, let me worry, it's no big deal. It creates bad behavior on the fiscal side. So I think we need to gradually raise interest rates and challenge this notion. We need a balanced budget amendment. We need to have a line item veto power for the president. We need to make sure that people understand that the entitlement challenges we face aren't sustainable. We have to change them, not for the people that already have it, those can be protected, but for the next generation. 58, 48, 38, not 68. We need to make sure that we have programs in place that will be sustainable, and they're not right now. They're not sustainable at all. And then finally, I would say, one of the easiest ways to lessen the spending in Washington is to shift power back to our states. I was governor of a state where I thought I could build roads a little better than some bean counter in the Department of Transportation telling me with all the federal rules how to do it. You could build, you could get permitting done faster, you can, you didn't have to have Davis-Bacon rules that create higher costs, the eminent domain process was faster. I can give you lots of reasons why states are smarter at building roads. We'll shift the power back, let the local communities decide what the infrastructure needs are. Let's go to a bottom-up society again, rather than top-down. Education, Medicaid, which is another place that needs to be reformed. Let the states create new forms of Medicaid and Kid Care and all the other insurance programs that are federally mandated. The states will do this better, they'll do it at a lower cost, and it'll be more reflective of the new, unique health needs of each community. So there's a way to do this, and it won't happen overnight. But high growth, reforming our entitlements is the two big things. And then, just bringing the hammer down on how government spends. I actually enjoy that part of my job. Some people don't like the job part of the job in politics. I actually liked it. We reduced the government workforce by 11% when I was governor. You can fire people in Florida for incompetence in state government. I know that's a radical idea, to imagine you could actually do that. But think about Washington, Washington has, the Veterans Administration has 360,000, or 330,000 employees. There's a waiting list to be able to get care for the VA. It's ridiculous, it's outrageous that this exists. Veterans should be, talk about people on the front of the line. Veterans should be right there, front and center at the front of the line. But they're not, because they can't even get access to the VA system. They have to get diagnosed, they have to get, you know, get that first meeting, and they can't get it. So the smart people in Washington said, well, here's the deal, we'll give bonuses to the management by reducing the work, you know, the waiting list. And they got bonuses, and the waiting lists were reduced, but no one got care. And people died. How many people have been fired? Three. Three people. This has to change. If you want to make government work like it does, should do in the 21st century, we need to reform our procurement policies, we need to reform the public unions' power, we need to reform all sorts of things, and shift as much of it back to the states. Is your pharmacy going well?
Yes, we cut 750 hours per week out of the region here because of basically Medicare reimbursements. And I'm working in a different place, but it's tight.
I think pharmacies, by the way, there's a great opportunity to provide a more community-based health system where you're, where people who know their pharmacist, you can have a relationship with them, can provide healthcare services and advice and counsel. It's another barrier that needs to be brought down, you're talking about nurses, for example. Nurses, nurse practitioners should have more prescribing power, they should have more power to be able to interact with patients. I think pharmacists can provide a community-based solution that is much better, particularly in underserved areas where there's not as many doctors. There's a lot of things that we could do to move all of this stuff into the 21st century. Yes?
I have two questions.
Why don't you make it, one question with two parts?
Okay. So, candidates like Bernie Sanders want to make public universities free for students to reduce the amount of debt, because students come out of college with a ton of debt.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on that?
There is no such thing as free. That's my first thought. Mr. Sanders, I like his heart, I like his heart, I like his genuineness, I mean, the guy's the real deal. But he's proposed, as I recall, by September, he had already proposed something like $15 trillion of new spending over 10 years. That's just, rewind the tape back to the challenges we face, it's just not a sustainable thought. There's no, you can't, you could expropriate everybody's money above a certain level, and you wouldn't come close to meeting the spending ideas that he's proposing. So that's not, that's not the right approach. But I think the point of your question was, what are we going to do about the high cost of education? And there, I think we need to reform the student loan program. We need to provide greater opportunities. I'll tell you the Florida story. The Florida story is one for in-state students that has the lowest tuition at public universities. We have a lottery, I guess you all have one too, don't you? Our lottery goes to pay for a Bright Future Scholarship Program, which means that if you have an SAT score of X and a GPA of Y, if you're over that number, you get 75% or 100% of your tuition paid for. So the lowest public tuition for public universities, lowest tuition is in Florida. We also do something in Florida that I think would apply across the country, which is more accountability for universities. Are you in college?
No, I'm not, I'm in high school.
So, if you're thinking about going to college, one of the first things that should happen is, you ought to be, there ought to be some counseling to determine what your degree is earlier, that you can plan it out earlier, and make sure that you can graduate with a four-year degree in four years. Today, we measure four-year degree completion for full-time students in six years. Well, let's call it a six-year degree and admit defeat, or allow people to graduate in four years and have the classes. Today's Thursday, you could have a class in universities on Thursdays, Friday's kind of hard to find. Professors don't teach the way they used to. So, reform higher education so that students don't have the burden of recourse debt on their backs to have higher costs imposed each and every year by universities. There's this notion now that universities, there's higher education inflation. There's nothing in a textbook, economics textbook, that says that healthcare inflation by, you know, by divine edict is going to be different than regular inflation. Now we have higher ed inflation that's higher than healthcare inflation. This is because of government involvement, that we have some different form of inflation. And there needs to be greater accountability for the universities, so that students can graduate with a four-year degree at a lower cost. And one of the suggestions I would have is, follow the Florida model again, the Ohio model and other places, where you have more and more of the money that the state provides for public universities and community colleges, performance-based. So you say, here are the objectives we want with this money, and if you don't get it, you get less money, and those that achieve it get the difference. When you create a performance-based system, you get more performance. And I think that has to be part of this as well. What was the second part of your question?
My second question was, you were talking about wanting to improve the country economically for future generations, but what about the environment? What are your thoughts on improving the environment for future generations?
Okay, that was two questions, not one, two parts. Look, I think it's compatible to advocate high sustained economic growth and protecting wild New Hampshire and wild Florida, protecting the environment around us. In fact, I think you can make a pretty compelling case that environmental degradation happens more in countries where there's less economic growth, where there's less prosperity, because the resources aren't available to be able to do this. China just announced a kind of a whoop statistic. They just said, well, we actually are emitting 17% more carbon than what was, what we thought, because they're, they've undercounted the amount of coal that they're using, apparently. And everybody's probably up in arms about this. The simple fact is, as countries mature and grow, they have the resources to be able to protect the natural environment. The Florida story is kind of insightful on that as well. Florida, during my reign and during my time, and the two previous governors, had what was the largest land purchasing program in the United States, other than the federal government. And it was to protect pristine Florida. It was important for us, because it actually is an economic development tool. All of the wild part of Florida is the reason why 90 million people come to visit. And protecting it was a smart thing to do economically as well as environmentally. But we would never, in fact, when there was the downturn, that land purchase program stopped, it stopped for about six years. The downturn actually made it harder for us to protect the water and the pristine land and the air, all of which was a responsibility. So, I frankly think that you can grow the economy and protect the natural environment in a way that's important. I believe that it's our responsibility, I think this is really a moral question, it's kind of embedded in my faith, that the creatures and the natural beauty of our country is a responsibility for us as human beings. It's inspired by God, and we should be protective of it. And when I was governor, we got to do that. Now, how do we not do it? I'll tell you how not to do it, to impose all sorts of rules on top of everything. Out west, the federal government owns most of the land, and they have no input. The states and communities have very little input on species management and on land management. And they impose this from outside of the communities, and there's no trust, and they typically get it wrong. We need a bottoms-up approach on every aspect of our life if we're going to be serious about improving things. Yes?
Hi, could you elaborate on your strategy in the Middle East in terms of ending the war in a year or two?
Ending the war? Which war? Which, what do you...
Which war? All the wars in the Middle East, Turkey, Syria, Palestine, everything, please.
So, I think, I don't think we can unilaterally engage in countries without having a clear strategy and without having a clear exit strategy. A strategy includes the exit as well as the entrance. That's a lesson learned, I think, for history for a long, long while. And we have to do this in partnership with those countries that have direct security interests in the discussion. So let's take ISIS and Assad, which is really the big conflict on how to deal with it. You have Russia supporting, Russia, the Iranians, Hezbollah supporting Assad. They've killed 250,000 innocent people, they barrel bombed, literally barrel bombed civilians. It's tragic. And if you're a Christian in ISIS-controlled areas of the Middle East, you have a death sentence on your head. So, what do we do? I think we need to lead, not be, not leading from behind, but we need to lead, which means we need a strategy. The president has admitted in the last year, twice now, that he doesn't have a strategy. Sending 50 special operators to support the Kurds in Syria is not a strategy. It's an incremental approach that is, that is not focused on what the purpose of this is, what the strategy is, what the end game is, how do we get out? There's none of that, it's just, where there's pressure, we've got to do something, getting criticized, so let's just send these incredible men in special operations to do this work. A strategy would include creating safe zones for the remnants of the Syrian Free Army. It would have the diplomatic imperative of garnering support from the Saudis, from the Turks, from the other countries to support this one fighting force, this unified fighting force. It would create an air power superiority, which we have, where you're creating a safe zone in the air as well, to provide support for this army. It would also provide support for the refugees, where 4 million Syrians are leaving their country, a country of 23 million people. Imagine putting that in the scale of the United States, we're talking about more than 15% of the entire country is uprooted and leaving. You could provide safe harbor for them, rather than having them risk their lives to try to cross into Europe. Europe needs to be part of this as well, because they have a direct benefit from bringing some security to Syria, so that these refugees don't make it to Greece and then all the way up to, even up to Scandinavia now. So the strategy should be to take out ISIS and to take out Assad, and to find a diplomatic solution based on our strength, rather than our reaction to Russia. And there is no strategy. So I don't know if it's two years, or one year, or four years, I can't answer that question. I don't have the intelligence briefings to know what the requirements would be and how long it would take. But I think that's the proper role. Without American leadership, we have chaos, we literally have chaos, and it will come back to haunt us. As it relates to ISIS in Iraq, when we pulled back in the surge, the work of the surge created a fragile situation, but it created a secure situation. When we left, ISIS filled the void. And now it has control of a caliphate the size of Indiana, both in Syria and Iraq. And similarly there, we need to support the Kurdish forces, we need to support the Sunni tribal leaders that were part of the surge, and we need to support the, embed our troops that are there, they're only 3,500, embed more of them into the Iraqi military, use our air power here to our advantage by having air controllers and have just better intelligence capability to know where our sorties should go. 80% of the sorties that we have go back without sending out their, without dropping their ordinances, because we don't have the intelligence capability, and the lawyers are on top of this. And if we're going to fight ISIS, we need to consider a war, rather than a law enforcement exercise. That, and having a strategy to not just, I mean, taking out ISIS is doable for us militarily, but there has to be some degree of stability before we depart, and that should be our ultimate objective. Yes, sir?
I'm a pro-gun individual, and I find it very scary that the government is going to be arming the EPA, and if they do arm them, are they going to...
Arm the EPA?
Environment Protection Agency, they're buying guns for the EPA, and are they going to have a background check when they get their gun?
This is the last question.
No, they shouldn't, I mean, there's a law enforcement office inside of EPA, is that what you're saying? There's like a division for...
They're buying, they're spending a lot of money to arm the EPA.
Mark me down is not beyond neutral on that. I'm against that, I think we should just shift, most of this stuff can be done by the environmental agencies at the state level. And we don't need to have law enforcement officers in the EPA, we need to restrict EPA for the proper things that are national in purpose. The EPA right now is run by the White House to be able to carry out a progressive liberal agenda with no input from the people that are gonna be impacted. The two biggest rules that they are working on right now, both of which are likely to be ruled unconstitutional because they're, they're broad overreaches of what the law requires, is the waters of the United States rule that has now been, um, stayed in, in federal court, uh, which would allow for the EPA and the Army Corps to, to be involved in almost every development aspect. Broad definition of what the federal waters are, uh, from just navigable waters to all sorts of things, including drainage ditches, possibly culverts that are allowed, where you'd have to have, on farms and all sorts of other areas, where you'd have to have federal government permission. It is, it is, I would repeal it. And as it relates to the Clean Power Act, another, another overreach, the EPA is allowed by, by law, by Congress law to have, to, to, um, regulate source pollution inside the fence. So pollution that relates to the particular source. They're defining that to say that they're going way beyond that to outside the fence, and requiring each state to create a plan to, um, to reduce carbon emissions without any authority to do it. If the president wants to do this, and he clearly has a passion for this, he ought to go to Congress and get it passed. But he has no interest in actually forging consensus, uh, or doing what, you know, the, the regular order way of doing things is. Congress has this authority, they passed the Clean Air Act. And his, his, his interpretation of it will be overturned by the courts, but I would repeal that, that as well. I didn't know about the law enforcement side of this, but the heck, I mean. Yes?
I'm a high school student, and, um, as a young person, I've been promised change for the future, and so far, I've been greatly disappointed with that. If you became president, could you promise change for the future for young people like myself?
I can promise you I would fight as hard as I can to fix the things that I think are important to fix. And do it in a strategic way. There's some things the president can do unilaterally, I just described some that this president did unilaterally that I think he didn't have the constitutional authority to do. But I can undo, a president can undo the previous president's executive orders and things like that, I can promise you I'll do that. I will work with legislature in a new way to forge consensus about taxes and regulations, um, that, that respects the Constitution. I can promise you I will fight hard to do that, and I will make entitlement reform, which is probably the biggest challenge that young people should be most passionate about. That if we don't fix this, if we don't fix this, all of, all the other conversations are for naught. If you're just, because of the fifty trillion or a hundred trillion dollars of contingent debt, nothing else, all the other priorities will subside. And I promise you one other thing, that I will restore America's leadership in the world, to create a more safe and secure world. That we'll restore a more strategic approach to our military, we'll respect the veterans, all of those things are disproportionately the responsibility of a president. I can make those promises. And where it relates to fight, you know, fighting for what you believe in Congress, I have a proven record, at least, not of talking, but of doing. And, um, that's my mission, so, you know, I, I hope, are you gonna vote this time? Oh! That's, that's, that's disappointing. One, one more question. Yes, sir?
Thank you for taking me last question. Uh, fourteen years ago, um, I had a boy that was in, uh, West Palm Beach, who was part of the first wave of children to die from OxyContin. A lot of folks here always hear my, my anti-drug spiel, but, uh, soon after that, I got invited to the White House uh, by your brother, and my wife and I attended the appointment of John Walters, okay? So after that event, he came, your brother came up to me, I was toe-to-toe with him, and we were, he saw I was emotional, just months after my son's death. And, uh, you know, I had a good sixty minute, sixty-second talk with him, at least a minute, in an, an environment with three hundred people. And he had, my, he had, I had his undivided attention. So after that little spiel, he walked away, and my wife turned to me and said, "Did you, uh, get him to sign the golf balls?" And I thought, okay. So, I said, sweetheart, I was just talking with the President of the United States, you know?
It's hard to sign golf balls, by the way.
Well, so, I gave the Sharpie and the two balls to my wife, and she runs across the Rose Garden lawn.
You're kidding.
Secret Service, Secret Service checking her out. And, uh, your brother, he interrupted, she interrupted the President of the United States, and your brother said, said to her, just, you know, my, oh, she said to him that you need to sign these two golf balls, because my father-in-law's gonna kill me, you know? So, uh, he turned to her and just said that, uh, just make sure he doesn't use it, use these balls in the water hole. So, fast track to, two, two months ago. I'm a Realtor, was down at our state convention, uh, had our banquet, came out of the convention, started driving down Granite Street in Manchester. There was a car sitting in the front, in, in, at the light, not moving, cars were beeping at this car. As I tur, came around, driver slumped over the wheel. I stopped, checked his pulse, he was breathing heavily, trying to get his air. Was on the phone with nine-one-one, while I was being interrogated, he decided to stop breathing and go into full cardiac arrest. So I pulled the guy out of the car, he was a young twenty-year-old in his twenties. And did CPR in the middle of the road while I was being beeped at for blocking traffic. Was able to bring him back, he actually went down twice and got him back, and finally, the first aid and firemen and all that arrived. As you know, there's a heroin epidemic in this, in this country.
Yep.
And in the state. We have a president that doesn't enforce drug laws, picks and chooses what he wants to enforce. We have heroin coming across the, the border of Mexico. My question to you is, I know you have a good ro, a track record in Florida on the drug issue with Calvin and Fay and all. My question to you is, what would you do, what can you do to help enforce drug laws in this country, because you've talked about states' rights. And I don't believe the state of New Hampshire has the right to legalize Uzis for thirteen-year-olds. And I don't think the state, states have the right to legalize drugs, including marijuana, so.
Well, certainly, they don't have, they have the right to enforce federal laws of, of taking, for example, marijuana across the bound, across the borders between Colorado and other states. They're, you're right, the president, uh, and his, the Justice Department underholder picks and chooses the laws that they should enforce, and we need to enforce these laws. We need a strategy, though, as it relates to this epidemic. And, um, first of all, my heart goes out to you about your, about your, um, about your child. I've had personal experience with this, and just the heartbreaking nature of someone who you love with all your heart, who, who is afflicted with addictions or even worse, dies is just, it's horrible. So what do we do? In Florida, and I think this should be a national, uh, objective, we need to change the culture as it relates to pain, for starters. I think we over-prescribe way too much, someone told me this week, and I got it verified, that ninety percent of all opiates are prescribed in, is our pharmacist still here? Ninety percent of all the opiates are, uh, are prescribed in the United States and the world, ninety percent, we have five percent of the population. And the reason why, um, this is important is that these are, these drugs become expensive, or you lose the access to it legally, and heroin becomes a cheap alternative. And so, a comprehensive strategy would say to the AMA, we need to inform people more about the dangers of these drugs, the legal drugs, that we need to use them less, uh, number one. Number two, we need to make sure that, um, that we have a pers, prescription drug monitoring process. In Florida, we finally got that done, and there was a dramatic reduction in the number of uh, abuse cases, where people were doctor shopping or pharmacy shopping, or, or were doctors or pharmacists, in the rare case, were actually selling, um, these drugs illicitly, because they're, they're, you know, it's a high-profit, uh, kind of illegal business. Thirdly, we need to control the border, for crying out loud. In Florida, we, we were successful working with the federal government, because most of the drugs used to come through Florida, from Colombia into, into our country. Our success, though, has made Mexico now the source of importation through, through Canada, I mean, through Colombia and other places. And we need to enforce the border, not just because of rule of law, that's important, not just because coming here legally ought to be easier and appropriate, contrary to coming here illegally, but because of this very issue. There needs to be a concerted effort, state and local and federal law enforcement needs to work far more to make sure that these, the availability of heroin and other forms of, uh, of substances, um, are, are contained. We need more treatment, we need more treatment, many cases, people are ill. This is not a question of, you know, getting high, this is a question of deep challenges in your own life, and you medicate to deal with the challenges, it's not the other way around. And I think as a society, we need to have a greater awareness of this. And then finally, we also need to have, um, a recovery kind of mentality to deal with this. Addiction is a horrific struggle, and it requires people that have had the experience and others that love people to be able to provide support for them. All of this together could deal with this issue, and, but to ignore it, we do it at our peril. Because you, you think of the consequences of addiction, alcohol addiction, drug addiction, how it plays out. It plays out in domestic violence. We have an epidemic of that as well. It plays out in the juvenile justice system, it plays out in child abuse, it plays out across the board. It, back to, and I'll close with this, back to believing that everybody's an asset, that everybody's a gift from God, that everybody has the chance to, to, to live a life of purpose and meaning, that they can reach whatever their full potential is as God has given it to them, then this has to be dealt with, because people are not living their lives of purpose and meaning to their full capacity because of the affliction of addiction, so, brother, I, I appreciate you bringing this up, I appreciate you saving a life. And I think that it is really important, not just in New Hampshire, but across the country, that we create comprehensive strategies to deal with this. Thank you.